Good evening. It's six P M on August the fourteenth. This is a Monday, and this is the regular scheduled monthly meeting of McDowell County Board of Education. And this month's meeting is now in order. Our first item of business is to approve this evening's agenda, and is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Tupo makes the motion, and Ms. Mumaw makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, all of those in favor of approving the agenda, right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. At this point in our meeting, we have begun asking folks to take a moment silently to consider the reason and purpose that we're all here, and that is to serve one another. So may we, please? And we, we thank you. Next item on our agenda is pledge of flag, and our NJROTC students usually present our colors, but they're busy getting ready to return to school. And so this evening, the colors are in place already. I would ask retired Colonel Brian Oliver if he would lead the group in the pledge this evening. Would you, sir?
Yes, sir, everybody. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. All right. Moving on along through our agenda this evening, the next item, our remarks by our superintendent, Dr. Tracy Gritt. Sir, I'll turn the floor to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Engles. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, folks out there in the crowd tonight, we appreciate y'all being here. Just a couple of things, and I'm gonna read some things, and some things are gonna be a little more off the cuff, but we'll, we'll kind of work through this. It's been a busy month, a really busy month, but it's been, it's been a really great month. So, you know, we're really preparing to bring their students back, and we look forward to a great year of student growth and parental partnership. McDowell County Schools recognizes the value of our parents and support we can lend to one another in helping our students be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. I really want y'all to think about that. Enrolled, enlisted, or employed. Those are our future goals following high school. We'd like to see our students be in one of those fields. Parents, we encourage you to contact our schools to offer your support and to be an active part of your child's education. Together, let's make the 2023-2024 school year a year to remember, and we're excited to do that. As you know, we've got some students that are ready to come back to school, and our teachers are coming back next week. And some folks have been working really hard about that. So I'm just gonna work through a few things. It's always good to start out with celebrations, and tonight I've got some celebrations to share with you. Ms. Baker, our principal at Eastfield Global, was invited to the Hunt Institute to represent us on a webinar as a national, as a national level speaker. Folks, that's a big deal. That webinar will take place in October, and it's titled "Home Room with Education Leader Series: From Plates to Grades: How School Nutrition Fuels Academic Excellence." We're proud of her, and, and, and I would ask that she come back and share that with us. So that's one of those things that just kind of foreshadowing a little bit of something we can look at. Well, I think, I think Ms. Bennett at the high school must have been jealous, and she and her team decided to do the same thing. So they were recognized to, to do a national presentation as well. They'll be, that team will be going down to Orlando, Florida, to the National Dropout Prevention Conference, where they're invited to present a session that started in 2017, and this work started in 2017. And it's the journey to develop tier-one strategies, including classroom management and essential skills and resiliency for students. So we're excited about that. It's always good to get some national level recognition. We were actually, this afternoon, just before we came over here, we had a couple of students that were being recognized at the commissioners' meeting for their Skills USA national accomplishments as well. And we wanna let you know those folks did really well. They were two second-place finishers in a national skills competition. So those are some things to be excited about. While we're on the national roll here, it's been that kind of week. Also honored to recognize Ms. Francine Dillingham for receiving the Distinction of Certified Educational Office Employee. Francine took the educational steps required to earn her National Professional Standard certification. So another great honor for Ms. Dillingham, and she will, she's representing us well in that as well. So I wish, I wish now we could talk about, continue to all talk about policies, but when it comes to the state budget, I just don't have a policy quite yet for you. I know that, I know that there are some things as far as some potential raises there for our staff, and that's something that we're all certainly optimistic about. It's one of those you don't want to overpromise something and under-deliver. But the news is pretty, pretty clear that there will be some kind of raise coming out of Raleigh. Again, we, we, we just want to wait till we see that for sure. But the state budget being held up, that is a little bit of an issue for us. I know Ms. Rampy and her team looking, looking at that every day pretty closely. It's hard to operate when you really can't put something in place. So that's something we are keeping an eye on. Also this week, we welcomed back students at MAI in N E C. They begin classes there August the seventh. That's actually last week. This week, they're actually on their trip. So the first week looked to be a success. I enjoyed getting out there and seeing those students. Super, super good week. The executive cabinet folks have been very busy, very, very busy. I just want to say thank you to you guys, folks sitting at the table over there. You guys have been working, as well as our directors here in the office. We, we got a little bit of a late start on some things. I mean, you know, I know that we had had some things going, but there was a little, there was a little interim there between, between Ms. Oliver and myself. I know Ms. Oliver had worked really hard, but in that situation, it was hard to move anything forward because he wasn't sure exactly what, what we would be moving forward. So, but, but I've tasked the executive cabinet with coming up with some things, and they've worked really hard, and I certainly appreciate that. A few things I've been working on is our student handbook, our student code of conduct, as well as, as, you know, that's part of the dress code that goes in there at the school level. So there's been a lot of work that's been done there, and, and that team, we're gonna get a presentation here tonight on that student code of conduct, and you'll see in there that there's been quite a bit of work done. Also want to congratulate and thank our leadership team. We had our leadership retreat this, this, this month. I want to say last year. Gosh, feels like we've done a lot in the month. Had our leadership retreat this month, and we were able to accomplish a whole lot of things with our strategic plan, being able to put goals in place, additional goals in place to the goals that we already had. And really, boy, we were able to take those four goals that you guys had and merge them into what is now our strategic plan. We're looking forward to being able to share that with you all coming up in September at the work session. So pack a lunch or something, because that's gonna be a long one. Just go ahead and tell you, that, that's a lot of information we're gonna be going over. And again, that's this team and, and the work they put forward, and I, I couldn't be happier with the, with the efforts they've done. Welcome back our beginning teachers just a few days ago, as well as our new teachers to our district. And Ms. Knott did an outstanding job there. It was a, was a big, big deal for our folks. It's also been a busy meeting, meeting time for, for me. I was able to meet with Sheriff Buchanan, Chief Lawrence, Chief Lidle, County Manager, Mr. Wooton, Mr. Boyett, City Manager, Dr. Merrick, President of McDowell Tech. Have you, just like I said a few minutes ago, I met many of the county commissioners tonight when I had the opportunity to speak before them. So it's been a very, very busy meeting, meeting month as well. And, and folks, we're fortunate in, in McDowell County to have the partnerships that we have. I've been incredibly impressed with folks at, at every one of these meetings. And, you know, there's a continued thing that can, that pops up, and that's just that, that collaboration piece. And that's something you don't see everywhere, and that's one of those things, particularly when you're talking about law enforcement. And that's a lot of people moving in the same direction from different agencies. It's easy to get your agency moving in the same direction, but when you get three different agencies, and they're all agreeing to do the same thing and come together to do what's best for kids, it's just, it's hard to put a price on something like that, and we're doing a great job. Had some listening sessions where, where I asked folks a couple, three different questions and, and really trying to get some feedback from them, our lead teachers, our middle and high school athletics, including meetings with our principals in each of those groups. So I will tell you that the, the lead teachers ask if I could sing "The Weather Calls." And I don't know if, if, if Mr. Garrett's listening out there, but I hear that he sung a few weather calls, so I've, I've got some work to do. I don't know about that. I told him if Mr. Oliver would help me, we might be able to muddle our way through some kind of country song or something. Absolutely, absolutely. I, I just don't know if I'm gonna be able to carry on a tradition, but we'll give it a shot anyway. That, that's important though, because each of those groups, when I asked one thing, which was, what should I never change in McDowell County? I think that was a critical, critical question to that group. And they reported they never wanted to lose sight of students, and that they should never change the small-town field where we are. All of our staff are comfortable working and partnering with one another. And, and really, I could echo that among all of our groups. I know I'm talking specifically about the teachers. Heard the same thing out of our coaches, heard the same thing out of our principals. And that's, that's, you know, for me, moving here, what a gift. I mean, when, when you hear that, when you come in, that was a gift and really a treat for me. So I was, I was super happy to hear that, and I know you guys all do know that. But for me, it was certainly good to hear that loud and clear from those folks. Fall athletics is in full swing. The Titans have completed their preliminary scrimmages, and that's in a lot of different sports. We've got cross-country, men's soccer, women's tennis, football, volleyball, and women's golf. They're all in full swing. The Titans will take on RS Central Friday night in football. I think our volleyball team's playing tonight. The football game starts at seven o'clock, and we're looking forward to a big crowd. I hope you, you all will come out and join us. Tomorrow, we celebrate our twelve-month and summer staff with a lunch out at Lake James. The script's worked hard over the summer. It's been a lot of efforts to get everything ready for school, and these folks have worked diligently during that time. And really just want to give a special thanks to our office support. You know, they kept the candles burning at the school during the summer, as, as well as our principals staying there and, and keeping things going at the school. Those buildings aren't just, they're not just sitting, sitting empty. There, there's stuff going on in them a whole lot too. So having to move and clean around those is, is a big deal. And our C O staff, county office staff, for keeping us rolling through the summer here have done a great job. Custodians and maintenance, cafeteria staff, the technology staff, Garrett and his crew, for helping us get ready. I mean, we, we have kids coming back, like we said, on August the twenty-eighth, so they've really gotta be ready. Bus garage, getting all our buses rolling and, and getting all the drivers back to kick the year off. And really, finally tonight, we're excited to welcome our staff next week. So next week will be the first time that many of our staff will be back. We're doing a convocation on August the twenty-third. And board, just like we said last week, we'll be at the East Middle School at seven thirty A M. That's early, to begin the day with coffee, and we encourage those that can stick around to hear Dr. Silver's message. If you have an opportunity to do that, we'd love to have you be out there. And like I said, the most exciting thing is we got people coming back August the twenty-eighth. So we're super excited about that, and I really looking forward to it. And I think, I think we're gonna have some great things in stores for them, and look forward to kids coming back and really getting partnered with us on this mission. Thank you. That is starting at eleven-thirty. Come hungry.
Uh, Dr. Gritt, thank you. Sounds like you and your team have been extremely busy over the last month. And sure you still feel like you got a whole lot left to do, so carry on. Next on the agenda this evening is a presentation from the folks at the LINK program. And I'd like to introduce Ms. Juanita Doggett and her cohort, sidekick, protege. Partner in crime, you say. Ms. Kim Efler to the podium. So, Ms. Doggett, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gritt, thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak tonight, because I know how busy you all are. I'm Juanita Doggett, the LINK coordinator for the program here in the county, which is one of the most wonderful things that this county does, I think. LINK has been active for fifteen years, and if it had not been for COVID, we would have been active for sixteen years. LINK stands for Leadership, Involvement, Networking, and Community. I look around and see my former students, and my ears are still ringing from a couple of them. I won't call any names, Amy. And new students. I've got a couple of board members sitting here, and Becky's gonna be in it. Most of that table over there has been in it, and I look around, a bunch sitting out here too. It's a wonderful program. I'm blessed every year. I'm the one who benefits more than anybody else from it. I get to meet between fifteen to, she just told me, twenty-nine people every year, and they become my friends. I will have to say, twenty-nine people is like herding cats. Adults are not the easiest group to manage. No, I'm not saying anything, Amy. I'm not gonna bring anything up.
It's okay. We won't rehash that year.
Yeah, we won't rehash that year. But the purpose of my visit tonight is to say thank you about fifteen years late. I don't think anybody's ever come or sent you a note saying thank you because you all provide us a bus, a driver, and the gas. And we can't go anywhere without that bus, and we can't do it without you all. You all are a wonderful team member with us. You're so kind to us. My bus driver just retired this year. He, he had done, if I'm not mistaken, fourteen of the years. He did not do the first year, but he didn't want to, I don't know if it was me, I, I say it isn't, but he didn't want to renew his C D L license. But Susan West, Westall is gonna do it for me this year. Susan has driven for me before when I did a teacher's LINK, and no offense, but please don't call me about that anytime soon. Teachers love getting out of that classroom. And. They're incredibly hard to manage on a bus. Anybody in here all that was a LINK teacher on the bus? Good. But Susan is gonna drive for me, and I'm really happy about that. She's retired. So from the bottom of our hearts, we want to say thank you so much for believing in this program and sticking with us for fifteen years. I know Dr. Gritt doesn't know much about LINK. I'm thinking most people sitting in here do know about LINK. So if you have any questions, you can ask me, and Kim, if you would like to join me up here. Kim Efler is our C E O and President of the Chamber, and one of my many bosses, because I have a ton of bosses, because I, I have a lot of people that fund us. We couldn't do it without the funding, and we appreciate all of that. So if you have any questions, we'll answer them for you. Well, that's good. So thank you all again. I said to Kim, and I talked to a couple of people, and I said, you know, we've never said thank you, and we apologize for that. We just seem to move along and take things for granted without meaning anything by it. So thank you all from the bottom of our hearts.
She's really the boss. Dr. Gritt, it's nice to meet you, finally. It's nice to put a face with a name. Mr. Chairman and members of the school board and staff, thank you all for allowing us to come tonight and speak to you. I'm really just Juanita's wingman, and just to make sure she stays in line. But as a mom of one graduating McDowell County Schools student, she graduated in 2020, and I have a rising eighth grader this year at Foothills Community School. You all are near and dear to our hearts as a family. I have been nearly five years with the Chamber of Commerce and have never spoken to you until tonight. So it's great to be here, and hopefully you'll have me back. So we, the Chamber of Commerce is your connection to four hundred and forty businesses in McDowell County. We continue to grow at rapid pace. We are a thriving organization. We are your connection, and we have an incredibly generous business community that wants our students to succeed. If we can be that voice for you, please let us know. We value your commitment to this community, this partnership between the Chamber and McDowell County Schools, and to all of us for building this thriving community and the collaboration that exists. Thank you.
I did forget to say one thing that I did wrong. We have a LINK High School class that's gonna start back this year. It'll start the Monday after school is out. We haven't done that in several, several years because the old lady can't handle it anymore. It's really hot in June and getting on and off the bus. We cram ten months into eight days. It takes a younger person to do that. So I have con Pat Gross and Courtney Interst, which I tend to butcher her last name. They're gonna do it for us. I'm gonna organize it because it's gonna happen at the, just at the same time those ladies are trying to get student scholarships and DECA and all of the things that they do in C T E. So I'm gonna organize it, and then they're gonna manage it on the bus with about fifteen high school kids. And that is one of the best things I've ever done. The LINK High School students are phenomenal. I could tell you all kind of stories about them. I won't, but they're, they're really good, good kids, and I still have contact with a lot of these kids who actually still want to go to dinner with me, which makes me very happy. And they're in college or getting ready to graduate. And we have a LINK scholarship program. And we give out, I'm not sure how much we're doing.
Four thousand dollars a year.
Not to each student. And we divide that up. They have to, not really compete, but they do have to do an application process. And we look at a lot of factors. There's a committee that makes the decision so that they can go to college. And it's not a lot, but every little bit helps if you have a child in college. And Kim's got a video.
New lily in the fall can watch the top of that mountain change colors by the temperatures each day, each week. You can see the colors right on top, and they'll just turn down like a rainbow. It is amazing. That is how the Patty Creek State Park came happening. And so that's where that came in, and we've got the number one state park in North Carolina within the Patty Creek State Park. It's a magnificent place. Twenty-eight hundred acres, it's tall, the long arm, the midlet.
Joseph McDowell here and his father, they took all their cattle up to Old Fork and, and took them up into Royal George, and they hid them up there.
Where we're standing right now is Rowan County, and it had no western border. In seventeen seventy-seven, this became Burke County, but still no western border because they didn't know what was beyond the Blue Ridge.
Nice.
All right. Okay. Folks, uh, Ms. Dogg, Ms. Effler, thank, thank you so much for continuing to offer the program to the folks. Yeah, can it, and for the public's information, this is open to anyone. Okay. Uh, a very good way to learn about what all does go on in McDowell County. Wow, yeah. Yeah, you. That happens sometimes. But, uh, thanks again and, uh, I'm speaking for myself. I feel confident. And I'm sure the board would echo the sentiment that, uh, we're committed to continuing to support the program.
We couldn't do it without you all and we appreciate it so much. And we also appreciate Education Day, which is, uh, in March. But whenever, uh, Mr. Oliver and I work closely together, he does all organizing to get that done for me. So we can give it all over, well, not all of it, but a large portion of the schools. Because logistically, we have to keep everything within, uh, the path. But, um, it's one of the better days of the year.
Juanita and, and Ms. Effler, I, I truly do wanna thank you as a person that has gone through the LINK program. It was, and I told you this earlier when I saw you, I think it's, it's almost life-changing because you make connections in your community that you never realized that you would. And, um, friendships that will last a lifetime as well. And so, um, I, I truly thank you. My son being part of the student, um, organization. And, and I'll never forget friends. He said, Mom, why do you make me do these things? Why do you make me do? And I said, just do it. I'm telling you, just do it. Two days later, that was the best day. Like, he really enjoyed it. So I do encourage everyone and I'm, I'm really excited about Michelle and Beth and Becky this year getting to go and do that. So thank you for all that you all do. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And the point of it, I still is to show them what this county has brought. We have a phenomenal community. Tell them that there's all wonderful great things going on. And we want them to go away, do their education, but we want them to come back here and be acting as part of the college.
Yep, absolutely.
It's also to, to help develop leadership. And to have more leadership and to not think of leadership as coming from the same places that we think of it as coming. And it does, you, you guys are great. So thank you.
What I'm excited about with this, um, is just being able to see how all parts of the community work together. And, uh, because none of us can exist in our own bubbles and expect our kids to ever become a part of a bigger society. And so I think that, I think it shocked Michelle when I was like, I can't wait to, there's so much about McDowell County I don't know. And she was like, you're really, you're kidding. Because I always seem to have some story about something. You know, but when you're as old as I am and you've lived here as long as I have, you know, but I'm, I'm looking forward to it. But, uh, just again, you know, and if you'll share with the Chamber, um, just on behalf of myself, I'm not gonna speak for the other eight. Just how much we appreciate the business community and the fact that as a school system, all, all it seems like we ever have to do is just say we need. And they're like, let us know where and when. And so, so we do appreciate that definitely. Looking forward to spending the next ten months with you, Juanita. I know, I know you're excited.
It's not that bad. We had a good class.
Some things just don't change.
It was, it was an exciting day, going to try to every day with time.
And you missed us afterwards.
Oh, yeah, I missed the ring in my ear. But we did have a great time. And the thing you learn is when we, we have a lot of hosts. That everybody that presents loves what they're doing. They're happy. And I, and I know for a fact they don't have time to pull the bus. But they're always excited. They love what they're doing. They wanna showcase all of the stuff that everybody's doing. And I think that's what you walk away and when you get back on the bus, people are saying, man, they really enjoy what they're doing.
It's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I look forward to it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next on our agenda this evening is Student Behavior Update. And Dr. Grit, I'll let you, uh, intro this portion of our agenda this evening.
Sure, sure. We've got, um, Ms. Ma, Ms. Ashley McCarthy, Ms. Crystal Handy, and Mr. Edwin Spivey coming up to do a presentation for us tonight, uh, doing the Student Behavior Update. Well, your names are on the report here, so.
We're here for Ashley.
Moral, morals, moral support, moral support. All right. Well, I know this, this group's been working really hard and this is, uh, again, one of those things that, um, that I, that I tasked them to, to get started on and, and they did a whole lot of work in our. What I think you'll see tonight is a collaborative effort, um, from our principals and from our directors and our executive cabinet, uh, to really put together something that'll help us be consistent school to school. Cuz you guys mentioned to me that we needed some consistency, uh, with our student behaviors. So, Ms. McCarthy, take it away.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Ashley McCarthy and I am the Director of Student Services for McDowell County Schools. I, along with, uh, Ms. Handy and Mr. Spivey, um, have really been tasked by Dr. Grit to begin working on, uh, student behavior and code of conduct and all things, uh, related to that. So, um, he's not lying when he says that we've been busy and we've been working. Um, but we have had great work, good work, um, and, uh, we're really proud of where we are so far. Okay, so I want to begin tonight, just kinda giving you a little bit of history about how we, uh, worked together to develop the student code of conduct that we have recently completed. And so the one thing that I want you to remember is that this was truly a team effort. There was a team of people from all levels. We had Head Start, we had Pre-K, we had elementary, middle, high, we had maintenance, we had, uh, transportation. We had feedback from every single, um, branch of our school system. And so it truly was a, a team effort. This is not something that Ashley created. This is not something that anybody else individually created. We worked on this as a team. The bulk of the work took place at our leadership retreat and as Dr. Grit already mentioned, uh, we attended that on August the first and August the second. Uh, that was all principals, all assistant principals, all directors. Um, and we really spent some time underneath Dr. Grit's leadership, learning about the direction that we were moving forward. Um, and how are we going to work together to get to that point? And so one of the things that we, uh, began our work in was, um, the, uh, planning of all of our district goals. So we really spent a lot of time on the first day of our retreat, working in teams to help begin this process of developing what are our goals? What is our direction and where are we going? And so one of the things that we were tasked with, um, was to work on this idea of student behavior, student discipline. How do we become consistent? How do we work together? And how do we create a vision moving forward for this particular topic? And so, um, the group that really focused on this particular piece of the strategic plan, um, mixed group from all aspects of the school system. Principals, directors, assistant principals, all levels, really coming together. And so the first thing we did is we had a very thorough, um, data review. We came, uh, to our session with lots and lots of numbers, lots of, lots of information related to all things, uh, discipline, um, all things students. And so we really spent some time combing through that, sorting through that, making sure that we were really finding, you know, what are the trends? What are the patterns? What are some things that we noticed that we need to work on as a group? And after we did that, we began to, uh, try to develop some goals to help lead our vision and to help lead our direction. And so we, uh, worked on that and as Dr. Grit mentioned, we'll be sharing that at the September, uh, work session. Um, and after we began creating the goals, Dr. Grit led us through a SWOT analysis. And if you've never been a part of that before, what you do during that process is you have your goal and you, um, identify what are your current strengths? What, um, are your current weaknesses? What opportunities, uh, do we have? And then what are some threats to us being able to meet this goal? And so he worked us, uh, walked us through that process. Um, it was a very methodical process that, uh, we were, uh, very fortunate to be able to have the opportunity to walk through to help, um, uh, come up with some of these ideas. And then the last thing that we had was, uh, feedback sessions. So after each of our groups created our SWOT analysis, we had feedback time for anyone from any of the groups to walk by, read, look at what we had created, add feedback, put notes, this is great, maybe we could expand on this idea. This is how my department can help meet this goal. Um, and then we also had, uh, grade span feedback sessions with all of the principals. We met with, uh, elementary folks, uh, separately. We met with middle school principals and we met with, uh, the high school principals in three separate meetings because each grade span has lots of different little nuances about them that we wanted to make sure that we provided time for them to have feedback. So, uh, there's been a lot of teamwork and a lot of time and a lot of thought that has been put into this document. So just kinda wanted to give you a history of where it came from and how we got to the point where we are now. Go ahead. All right, so the first thing I'm gonna do is just pull up the code of conduct. And I think it was included in the weekly review. Okay. So, uh, Garrett, can you pull that up for me, please? And in case you're wondering where you can find this, this is housed on the McDowell County Schools website. All right, so what I wanna do really quickly is just kinda walk through what the document looks like. A few of the things that it contains, just to kinda give you a, uh, frame of reference. So when you're trying to read this and try to think, you know, how does this fit into my kid's grade level? Or how does this fit into my perspective as a parent? Just so you can kinda understand a little bit of that. So if you'll scroll down. All right, so the first thing we want to do is always keep ourselves grounded in what is our vision and what is our mission. And of course, we are student-centered. And everything that we want to do, we have to think about how, how do we do this from an angle of what is best for our students? And then we also talk about our mission statement. You can keep scrolling for just a little bit. All right, the next thing you'll see is a, uh, welcome message from, uh, Dr. Grit. And so he has provided a little bit of explanation for you. Keep scrolling. Then we have included a directory of all of our schools, complete with address and phone number in case a need arises to get in contact with them. And then we've included McDowell County Schools Board Policy. This is just straight out of the Board Policy Manual. This is forty-three hundred. And in case you're wondering, forty-three hundred is the student behavior policy and this is straight out of the Board Policy Manual. We just put it there for reference. And then we really began to move into the meat of the document. And so the first page, uh, Mr. Mayor Hill, will you scroll back one page? Perfect, right there. So this is the first page of the document. And this kinda just gives you some guardrails, if you will, to help you kinda understand where does this, you know, these things come from? What, uh, policies are we using? What general statutes are we using? And so it really, these paragraphs just really go through and explain, okay, all of these things that are in here comply with the North Carolina law. They comply with any of the board policies that we already have in place. It also goes through and talks about that this list that's included in the student code, code of conduct is of course, not an all-inclusive list because things happen all the time that we didn't expect to happen and we have never dealt with before. And so this is, uh, just a guideline, but this is not an all-inclusive list of, uh, any possible, um, episode or event that could happen. Uh, we also explain in here that there are minimum and maximum disciplinary action guidelines. And I'll show you that in action here in, in, in just a minute. Uh, and it also talks about that there could be a case where a student violates more than one section of the code of conduct. And if that's the case, obviously there may be a more severe penalty than it says underneath one particular section. All right, if you will scroll down. All right, so let's just look at this. So this is the general format of what it looks like. And what we do is there are various sections. This particular section applies to anything that would be, uh, any type of violation that is related to attendance. And so we begin by providing just a brief definition of each of the different offenses. As you move through here, you'll see that. And then we also have linked any relevant board policies for you to just have a look through. Will you scroll back up a little bit? Just, yeah, right there, it's perfect. Okay. So, and then over on the right-hand side, you'll notice that you see, uh, at the top of the column, it says then, then you see grade and then you see max. And so the minimum, that stands for the minimum level of consequence that would typically be assigned for that particular infraction, once it reaches the administrator. Grade is referring to the grade span. And then maximum would be the typical maximum level pending all the circumstances that are involved, um, that that particular infraction would entail. And then there's numbers. And in a minute, we will show you exactly where those numbers are. Okay? And so, you go ahead.
Just one of those things, just, just to highlight and point out, every one of those, uh, numbers would re, also represent communication with parents.
Yes.
So I think that's a, that's one of those pieces we wanna make sure. And that's something we've had a, a great, uh, deal of conversation with our principals about. Uh, we're, we're, we're in a partnership with our parents, um, when it comes to student behaviors. So we wanna make sure we're making those phone calls home and that's certainly something. I see some principals in the room and, and they, well, they know that we do that. But it's just one of those things we like to reiterate that it, that it is a partnership to get this work done.
And so then underneath each section, you will see the different offenses. And the name of these offenses, such as leaving class without permission or excessive tardiness, these are the names that are recorded in Power School. And Power School is our, uh, official documentation source for all things related to school. Whether it's attendance, whether it's grades, whatever, that is the one source where it's all contained. And so these are the actual names that are provided by the state. These are not names of offenses that we made up. So any school system in North Carolina would be falling under these same offenses. So I don't want you to get confused about that. All right, so if you'll scroll down just a teeny weeny bit, Mr. Right there, it's perfect. And I know it's kinda small print, but, um, it, at the bottom of each page of this document, you will see what the different levels of consequences would contain. And so notice level one, this is going to be a lot of your minor level offenses that the first offense that reaches the office may just be a conference, might be a conference with a student, might just be a conference with a parent, say, hey, I just wanna let you know this is going on, you know, can you help me out here? Let's see if we can come up with something to make this situation better. Then we move on to level two. Level two, uh, is an intervention. And if you look down at the very last sentence in that little paragraph there, it says interventions include, but are not limited to. So we need to keep in mind that interventions are broad. Uh, that could be parent conference, timeout, lunch detention, after-school detention, in-school suspension. So all of those things are in a range of interventions. Other interventions might be, you know what, I, you might need a weekly check-in with our school counselor. That might be the intervention. You might need a check-in with our school counselor or our school social worker, things like that. So, so keep in mind that level two is an intervention. And an intervention is truly meant to be something to help. We know this behavior is a problem. We know this keeps occurring. What can we do as a school to be focused on you as the student to try to help rectify this situation? Because we know our ultimate goal is we want kids in class and we want them not distracted and we want them learning. Because that is our number one priority. And then we move into a level three, which is out-of-school suspension. Notice it's a range, one to five days, because we all know that every single situation is a little bit different. Um, level four is an out-of-school suspension, six to ten days. Level five is an out-of-school suspension for ten specific days. And, uh, there's a reason that there's one that's just ten days specifically. Um, and that has more to do with the administrative piece and what the principal, uh, can and cannot, um, assign. And then we move into level six and beyond, and that's where we get into, um, superintendent-initiated consequences. So a principal can only suspend a student for ten days. That is legally all that a school administrator can suspend a student for. If it moves beyond ten days, that has to be at the discretion of the superintendent. And so that is why it is very specific when it says superintendent, um, assigned consequences. Uh, and so possibilities, this is not an exhaustive list. These are some possibilities. Could be long-term suspension, assigned community service, or school reassignment. We'll talk more about school reassignment here in just a minute. Level seven is a three hundred and sixty-five day suspension and level eight is exclusion or expulsion. And there are certain offenses that by general statute, uh, re- And there are certain offenses that by general statute require that particular punishment.
Just add in, obviously, on those last two, seven, and eight, that's going to require board action.
Okay. All right, if you will scroll just a little bit further, Mr. Bear Hill. Okay, this is just, this is the start of the next page. Notice it's the exact same format regardless of whether we're talking about an attendance violation, if we're talking about any violation of the Student Code of Conduct. You would look at this chart and read it the exact same way. Minimum, maximum, grade level, doesn't matter. Just remember that minimum of one and a maximum of three, that's a range, okay? And the range is pending on circumstances, the number of previous offenses, all kinds of things, okay? Scroll down just a little bit more. And so you'll notice this is a very lengthy document. And the reason that it's lengthy is because we have to cover a very, very wide gamut when it comes to student infractions. We have to handle everything from being late to class to having a weapon or a firearm on campus. And so there's a huge range in that that we have to be able to account for in some way. So you can kind of see now how it works. I don't think we need to go through every single page because this is on the McDowell County Schools website underneath Parent Resources for the public viewing. So you're more than welcome to pull it up and read through it. But let's talk about why did we create a document that on one page we address K-13? Why did we do that? And one of the biggest reasons we did that is because we were tasked to create something that helped build consistency across all of the schools. And so Dr. Gritt tasked us with that. And so this is step one in our process to help build consistency across all schools. This is a tool. This is a working tool for administrators when they are dealing with situations that would involve a student breaking the Code of Conduct. That's going to help guide their decision. This is a tool to help guide their decision. This is a tool that gives the principal autonomy to work within a set of boundaries and say, these are the boundaries I have. This is the scenario. This is the circumstances. This is the past history. This is what we've got going on. This is where it's going to fall. This is the consequence that I, as the principal, am going to assign. It also helps build transparency for not just our administrators, but it also helps build transparency for all of our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, our students. This is included in all of our student handbooks. This is included on the Parent Resources page for McDowell County Schools. This is going to be put in our staff handbooks when they come back to work. So this is a document that is not a secret. This is a document that is meant to help provide transparency to all of our stakeholders. The goal is to increase consistency. And it's also to increase communication between the principal level and the district level in order for us to build in a layer of support. So when an administrator has a situation and they're kind of like, ooh, you know, this is a difficult one. I'm not quite sure where I should put it, or I'm not quite sure. They're more than welcome. This provides us and them an opportunity to have conversations about things that we need to be having conversations about. Note, this document, as I mentioned before, contains all offenses, from minor offenses to major offenses. We all know that there are some major offenses that occur in schools that require us to act in a different way than it would for other things. And so some of the other things that we are working on internally in order to help aid in this process for some of our more major offenses is we are working on threat assessment teams at each school. And so sometimes we do know that students pose threats, students make threats, or their behavior is considered a threatening behavior. And so we internally, at the district level, my team in particular, we are developing a protocol for threat assessment for McDowell County Schools that will be consistent across all the schools. And that will be a kind of a first for us as a district to have a consistent protocol for all the schools to use. It will involve our SROs. It will involve our school social workers if needed. It could involve EC teachers if needed. It could involve principals. It could involve school mental health professionals. So just a wide variety of folks on this team to help support this student. And not just support the student, support their family because that can be a very hard time for a family to navigate through whenever a child is displaying a behavior of that particular level. So that is in the works. We'll be reporting more on that coming up soon. And then the last thing we want to talk about tonight is options for school reassignment. We do know that as a board, one of the things that we've been tasked to, that the board has tasked us to, is to look in to the direction of alternative learning. And so we are beginning that process. And we have to make sure that we do it in a very thoughtful way, in a very methodical way, so that we can meet the needs of our kids. And so this year, we're going to be using the terminology "school reassignment." And basically what this would do is that would provide Dr. Gritt options. If we have a student who does have a behavior that is, rises to the level that could potentially be felony-level charges or could potentially be very, very threatening or harmful to other students, it does give him some options to look into this idea of reassigning them. And so our school reassignment plan, this year, we're going to be relying heavily on some of our virtual learning options because we want to make sure that we are not saying, no, you can't come to school. We have to provide them an education and we want to provide them an education. But what we have to do is make sure that we provide that in a safe way for all students. And so that is going to be something that we are going to be looking into. We're also looking into some smaller alternative learning programs within our middle schools, trying to think how we create different structures within what we already have. Thinking about how do we utilize reach, which are some of our therapeutic classrooms at middle, high school, and elementary? How do we utilize them a little bit differently to help with some of our most severe needs? So that is something that we have been working on. If you'll go to the next slide. And so this is what I leave you with, next steps. What can we expect from now to our next meeting? And so the first stop along this next steps train is convocation. So we have our opening staff convocation on the 23rd of August. And we have worked very hard to seek proposals from our own staff members as well as professionals in the field to come in and work with our teachers and provide a wide menu of options for them to choose from. And our theme that students, or excuse me, that teachers will get to pick from is going to be student behavior, engagement, that student engagement, adult engagement, all of those things. And then core content, of course, working on the academic piece to go along with student behavior and engagement. We worked on the schedule today. We have 19 different sessions for staff to pick from at 1:00. And we have 19 different sessions to be picked from again, and they're all different sessions. So we have over 40 different choices for staff to choose. And it is totally staff-driven, what they feel they need as a help to them. And we are really, really excited about being able to offer this to our staff. We've not been able to have this in this format for several years because of COVID and several other things. But we are just tickled that we are able to be able to provide an option to staff and they can choose what they need. So that will be what we hear about next. The next thing will be our threat assessment teams. By the time we come back in September, we should have quite a bit more information to share with you about a threat assessment team. What does that process look like? Who's that staff? And how does that help aid in school safety and in student behavior? And then also the strategic plan goals. And so you will see how this Student Code of Conduct, along with many other things that we've been working on, are kind of all coming together to help us meet our strategic plan goals. So stay tuned, lots of updates. Any questions?
I can ask a question.
Sure. Yes.
I think you're going to be reviewing this, but right now, we have, there are no, there's not a limit to the amount of parent notes that can be received regarding.
That's actually one of the policies that's on for revision tonight. And that's, it's a little bit later in the packet for tonight. So once that policy actually changes, then it'll change based on the document that we put out. So that's a live document. So as any of our policies get updated, we'll update that as well.
Yep.
Well, in relation to that, could you or Ms. McCarthy speak to what the proposed policy change is regarding parent notes?
When it comes to the parent notes, we were looking at, was it six? Six parent notes were going to be accepted before we would require a doctor's note. And then we were also looking at 75% of the day being what would be considered a day. And the reasoning for doing that is just twofold. One, obviously, we need to make sure that we're keeping our kids accountable for showing up to school. But also, when it comes to High School Athletic Association, they're really tasked us now to drive home the attendance piece. The High School Athletic Association's kind of stepped back a little bit when it comes to that. So we had to, we had to come up with some specifics on what that would actually look like. So that's really what that policy does.
I think that's one of the teachers that go to my air was, one teacher had 32 parent notes. I should put my child. So to put a number on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the amount of time you guys put into this. I know it has been a huge overwhelming task, but I appreciate you hearing not only what we've asked, but more specifically what our staff asked for. And so thank you for that. I love the fact that you went directly back to our policy manual. Being a former school employee, there's an awful lot of policies in there, you know, to look through. And the fact that it's right there, people can go right to it and refer to policies that have been in existence. None of these policies have been, you know, pulled out of the air. And we just decided to, you know, just come up with something new. I think, Dr. Gritt, I appreciate the fact that I feel very confident that these policies are going to be enforced. To our principals that are here, thank you guys for the amount of time that you put into just coming up with this matrix of how they're going to be enforced. I did have two quick questions. When you refer to in-school suspension, I think most specifically at the elementary level, will there be a staff member in place that will be responsible for carrying out in-school suspension? I know there's a difference between in-class suspension and in-school suspension. Has the team come to a point to how is that going to be executed more in a, in a setting where there's not a staff member assigned to in-school suspension?
I think that's a great question. And that's obviously one of those questions that's going to be school by school on how they handle that. I mean, ideally, you'd like for them to have a space where they can do that with their students. But again, that's going to be principals' level. And that's why it's considered that intervention place to provide them with some autonomy. Otherwise, we get into funding issue of how do we fund that? Which is really where we are when it comes to putting a teacher in a classroom. And then potentially, in addition to that, trying to find funding for somebody to be able to do that. The school has to get creative to be able to come up with ways to do that. I mean, it's a, it's a, it really is a catch 22. In a perfect world, and we had plenty of funds to go around everywhere, it would just be, okay, this would be a great thing. Let's just put this in place.
So more, more a school-by-school decision?
Yes, that part would be a school-by-school decision. And really, that falls into those interventions. You know, I suspect that, and then with our conversations with the elementary principals, they have a plan for it to address it because it has been something that we've asked them to look into.
Sure. And I know beyond a shadow of doubt that those eight people, there's two of them sitting right back there now. You already have a plan and I know that you have a plan. So I appreciate that. And then my second question, you know, I'm always, I'm a black and white. It's in print, it's not in print. When we get to things like verbal harassment, especially in the area of bullying and those types of things, and I've learned this about you just since July, I think you'll be pretty clear about, there's not, there isn't a gray area about what is bullying and what is not. What is harassment and what is not?
Sure.
And you will give that directive.
Yes, and we've had that conversation with our principals as well as, we were asked by the Asheville News about what our statement on that was. We're not going to tolerate it. So when we had those type of incidents, that can be reported to any staff member. And the expectation, I mean, there's actually, there's actually general statute at this point. You know, when things are reported to us, we're supposed to make sure we look into them. So that's one of the pieces that I've asked the principals to really pay attention to and be responsive to. And I will say too, and going back to what I started with, all of this is working with parents. When you get into those particular bullying harassment issues at any level, that's something we certainly need information from parents on both sides and really, just really working with those students in that situation. When you get into the intervention piece of those and those regular check-ins, I think that's some of those hands-on strategies are really the best when you think about it. Of course, there can be more punitive measures and more serious violations. But really, when you're talking about the routine type stuff that might be having in a classroom, those strategies that can be offered through the counselor, those strategies that can be offered with daily check-ins with the principal or another person, or even our peer-to-peer programs offer support there. So there's a lot of room for being able to do that within the school building. And I think we've got the staff here that can do it.
Sure.
And I think it's just a matter of just continuing to move forward and working on it.
And I like those intervention pieces because it does give educators the opportunity to educate.
Absolutely.
You may not see this as harassment, but let me explain to you why what you said created an environment where someone did not feel safe.
Sure, and the expectation is when that gets shared with the student and that gets shared with the parent, that that activity or behavior doesn't repeat itself. So like Ms. McCarthy said, there's different levels on whether it repeats itself or not. And I think really that's where, with the documentation the principals do on this, they're going to be able to pull up a report and say, okay, well, the students had that incident before. This is times two. They go to the discipline or Student Code of Conduct matrix and they look at it and it tells them exactly what's next. So there's no surprises for the parents in that situation. So really, what I like about this is just the consistency that it provides among the schools. But what we didn't want to do is take away the autonomy of the school itself. I mean, if you'll recall back to one of the things that I said earlier on with the lead teachers group, they like the fact that we have community schools. And that's a big deal. So it's a balancing act to make sure that we navigated that. I feel like this team, Ms. McCarthy and the team really did some great work here and I appreciate it.
And just a couple of things that struck me while I was listening to questions. One, I just want to talk about the level of feedback that principals were able to provide. When I say they were able to provide feedback, we went through this document line by line, read every definition. They were like, take this out, add this word, know what these levels are. That doesn't match what we do in our discipline at school. Like, I mean, we, it was hours of feedback that we received from each level of administrators. It wasn't just an email, here, review this, send me what you want. It was face-to-face conversations in person, every single administrator in the room for at least two to three hours per grade span, really meticulously going over this with a fine-toothed comb. So I feel like the administrators feel very well-versed in this. And I think they have a pretty good concept and understanding of how this document is meant to be used and that it truly is a tool. And if they're ever in doubt and they ever have a question, all they have to do is pick up the phone and call a member of our team up here and we'll be glad to help. The other thing is that, speaking to harassment and bullying, one of the large focuses of our retreat was a session with Campbell and Jattley on harassment and bullying. So we all received that message very, very loud and clear that these are serious things and that we are going to take them seriously. And so I just wanted to echo what Dr. Gritt had already said, that that was something that we all participated in. And then the last thing I wanted to share, and I'll leave you with this, kind of speaks to all this we've been talking about. One of the things we did in this process was list our strengths. What are our strengths surrounding some of our discipline goals that we created? And over and over again, whether it was in the form of an SRO or form of a behavior assistant or form of a school-based mental health professional or a principal, people. Someone wrote in all capital letters on like three sticky notes, people, people, people are our greatest strength and our greatest asset in McDowell County Schools. And I think this document is just another example of that, is that we have wonderful people. And when we get everybody pulling in the same direction, working from the same document, wonderful things are going to happen. So I just want to leave you with that, is that our greatest asset is our people. And people are adults, there are kids, there are parents, there are community members. That is our greatest asset here. And I think this is just another display of how all of our greatest asset, which is people, comes together. So that's what I'll leave you with.
I do have a quick question. I know that, Ms. McCarthy, I know that in my personal conversations with principals at times, particularly at like that middle school and high school level, is that one of the issues that they find particularly around bullying and harassment is that they'll go to investigate a situation and it comes down to a he said, she said. And then there's no consequences for anybody because they can't validate whether or not this really happened. But I have this guess that it often is the same student who this happens to multiple times and it comes down to this. happens to multiple times, and it comes down to this he-said, she-said type thing. At what point, when a student is accused multiple times of the same infraction, that continues to be unsubstantiated, what, I'm assuming this conversation must have come up along the way, and just, I'd love to hear a little bit of the feedback of what some of that conversation was, and maybe what some of the solutions might be around that.
Sure. Well, I'll go back to that statement I made about us not making decisions in isolation and really working with our parents. So we've got to be active participants when those things come up, and they do come up. But also, not just working with our parents, but that's when we want our principals to feel comfortable making the next call, the next level call. And in this leadership retreat, we talked about that Spidey sense. You just got that feeling that maybe there's something there, you maybe can't put your finger on it. So at that point, even if it's he-said, she-said, and you really can't find, you really can't nail it down, and I'll be honest with you folks, when you're dealing with cell phones and text messages and things that disappear instantaneously, it's difficult. So that's when I want our principals to reach out to our administrators here, have those conversations, and really, what other interventions can we look at? So when you think about those interventions, what other interventions can we put in place? Is this something where we have an opportunity to potentially separate this child from another child? You know, there's a number of factors that you've got to look at there, because you don't want to move a child to another classroom if they've been moved one time before. So again, you have to go back to that, if this is a repeat offender, and really just working through your process of elimination to answer those questions. But the biggest thing is, none of these things need to be done in isolation. We're going to be a team. We want our principals to know we're going to support them, and our parents to know that we're working together on it. Thank you.
Do you have a strategy for dealing with the children specifically as opposed to training teachers? And the difference between a five-year-old and a fifteen-year-old? And the handbook, it's one handbook that governs?
The handbook, and really, it's just levels. But the strategies for dealing with the students, that's what we were talking about, being able to provide the staff with at the convocation. And we've got varying levels of staff. You know, I mentioned earlier about the beginning teachers. Obviously, those beginning teachers need a complete, you know, workup on student behaviors, whereas our veteran teachers are pretty averse at it. And you'll notice they don't have a whole lot of troubles in their classrooms. So really targeting the ones, the teachers who may need a little more support, or as I'll call it, and when we talk about with our principals, we call it coaching. So principals know who those teachers are. It'll be part of the, part of the process to be having conversations with our principals about what teachers in your building need more coaching, what can we do, what strategies can we put in place to help your teachers with classroom management? I mean, that could be something we can do internally, because if you really think about it, there's a lot of talent here in the county. But also, we're not scared to look outside of McDowell County as well. So if there's things in our RESA or different places, we can send some folks to have another opportunity for some professional development to learn more about student behavior strategies, and we certainly would do that.
And also too, if you take some time to look through that document, you'll notice that there are many places in there where consequences are different for K-2 versus 3-5, because we also tried to think about developmental level of students. And that was a huge conversation in our elementary feedback session with the principals, is the way we would handle this situation with a five-year-old, when this is a developmental behavior, as opposed to a fifteen-year-old, when this is not a developmental behavior, is going to look a lot different. And so, I think that's where the key comes into equipping our, not just our teachers, but our principals too, to be able to say, you know, I understand where a child is developmentally, you know. So there's a lot of factors that play into it, but we did try to take that into account when we went through and put the ranges in there. You know, some of the offenses have very different consequences based on the age of the kid.
Anyone else?
Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you.
I know, Ms. McCarthy, you and Mr. Spivey, and Ms. Hamby, and other folks that have been working on this and continue to work on it, I suppose. I know y'all had a million other things to do to get ready for school to start besides this, but I want you folks to know that the board is very appreciative of it. It's something the board felt was important to be done, and thank you for rising to the task.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a little too, Dad. It really reinforces our respect and honor that you've done. I think you hit the ground running, and we're very appreciative and impressed with that, or I am, anyway. I think the board, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
It's easy to do with a team around.
Okay. All right. Well, speaking of collaboration, the board, each year collaborates with the countywide teacher of the year to come, let us, update us, let us know what else is going on across the system. And this year's teacher of the year is Ms. Mary Ann Basney, and this is her second official function.
Yes. I'm going to talk to you guys this evening. I'm going to highlight McDowell Early College, McDowell Academy of Innovation, our beginning teacher orientation, and a little bit, a couple of things about summer bridge that I've seen. We've had a lot of stuff already to start the school year off. And I got a little carried away, and I thought, I'll do two schools each time I talk. And then I added some more, and then I added some more, and I had to cut things off, because I thought, oh, I've already talked about four different things, and I can't do that every time. So, first thing, McDowell Early College and MAI are back in session, and so is Eastfield, but they will be in September, so I will talk about them as well. Do I have to point it? Okay, perfect. Okay, so in July, the ninth graders had the opportunity to attend a day at Lake James State Park for, they did some icebreakers. These were led by rising 10th and 11th graders, so they got to bond with some upperclassmen. They had a local food truck come out for lunch, and this gave them a chance for students to connect with each other, make some peer relationships, and meet with some teachers outside of the classroom before their journey began for their high school career. So that was in July. In August, they were welcomed back, like Dr. Grit said, on Monday. They have a superhero theme this year, and they, I didn't know much about this until this year, and one of the teachers of the year at their schools reached out and gave me some information. Students go, okay, students are going to focus this year on making a difference in their communities and being a hero in the lives of others. And I thought that was really neat. Each family of students randomly draws a superhero name, and it will represent their group. And each family will select a nonprofit community partner, and they'll work with them in various ways throughout the school year. So this first week of school, in their family time, they prepped for summer bridge, which they led for today, and students created a family flag, they created a token, and they developed a skit. And they'll do all of this on summer bridge. They led for Lookout Lodge in South Carolina today. Next, we have our BT orientation, and this is, good, I don't think I know what I'm doing. This is countywide. These are for all our beginning teachers in that first year. We have tons of beginning teachers, I'm sorry, I included some pictures. So you had, there was the lake day.
We took them on out to the lake, just getting started, right? Right? Big beginning teachers.
Yeah, exactly. There we go. This is Early College and MAI in July. And then the next page has their first week of school, their draft day, and a little bit of their team building.
That's cool.
Perfect. Thank you. So here's our BT orientation. They had five extra days of orientation. This is the state requirement. We have twenty-two BT ones this school year. We have lots, BT one, two, and three, but these few days focused just on our first-year teachers. They had two days at the county level with our lead teachers, and Alyssa Knite, she did a wonderful job with all the stuff we prepared with them. They had two days at RESA, and their last day was a workshop. It was held at Old Fort with Amy Dean. So they got a lot of strategies, and a lot of this is just to prep them, get them their teacher expectations to work in McDowell County, and give them a lot of stuff in their teacher tool belt, so they kind of have some support already built in before the school year starts, because they're going to hit the ground running. All BTs at this received goodie bags that the Chamber of Commerce put together from various businesses, and they loved them. It was like kids at Christmas, gift cards to Starbucks, to local places, water bottles, bags, all sorts of stuff. So they loved that. I thought this was a great takeaway. On our first day, we were, all the people were together. We were at First Baptist on Main Street, and Dr. Grit asked the group, who went to a traditional pathway in college to be a teacher? And maybe one-third of the room raised their hand. And then he asked, who's taking the residential pathway or the lateral entry? And well over half the room raised their hand for that, about two-thirds. And I was kind of taken aback, because I thought, man, this is completely flipped from just eleven years ago, when I started in the county. So that really stood out to me. I just wanted to give you guys that as well. Go ahead. I put a couple of pictures in from our BT celebration and our work sessions there. We also had a couple lead teachers who gave a presentation with Alyssa at the RESA workshop. Perfect. And we had, rising sixth grade and rising ninth graders had summer bridge opportunities at East, West, and FCS, and then also at the high school with the rising ninth graders. So East had a great turnout, and ended the week with a cardboard boat regatta competition at Lake James State Park. Students designed their own boat with just cardboard and duct tape, and it was wonderful. I've got a picture in the top corner of a group of students that designed their boat and took it out in the water, and they had a great time. So this was just a little sneak peek into some of the great things in McDowell County schools just in the beginning of August. Next month, you'll hear about Old Fort Elementary and Eastfield Elementary. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Basney. Gosh, we can hardly wait. Thanks again. Ms. Smith, is there any correspondence for the board this evening?
Yes.
Are there any requests to address the board this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move on with unfinished business. Dr. Grit, I'll let you speak to that.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we've got Mr. Oliver coming up to give us a little bit of an update on the facilities. We've got quite a few things going on to be noted. One, that multipurpose field that we've been talking about for some time, that is actually complete, and I'm sure we're going to get some photos of it and a little bit of information on it, as well as an update on our tennis courts and kind of where we are with maintenance on this time of the year. So looking forward to it, sure.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grit, school leaders, and special guests, thank you for being here tonight. This is an overview of all the things happening with facilities. It is certainly not a comprehensive list. There's so much happening at this time of the year, as you know. And maintenance is always ongoing, so that never stops, it never sleeps. But we'll go through some things, and then we'll share some photos at the end. I'm just going to give you some ideas of what, of all the things that are going on before we do that. But before I get started with this update, I need to say a couple of things about the LINK presentation. First of all, LINK was an awesome program, and I wish that Ms. Doggett was still here, because I really wanted to say what a great job Mr. Spivey did editing that video for the LINK program in front of Ms. Doggett. But I also wanted to say that she gave me credit for organizing on behalf of the school system, the support that we give, and then the actual education day. And I did, I did do that for eight previous years, but this year, Ms. Dowdell coordinated that for the district. So I wanted to set the record straight on that, because I looked over at Ms. Dowdell, and I said, you actually did that this year, didn't you? She said, mhm. So I needed to get that right before I sat down. And it was probably the best one they've ever had, because Ms. Dowdell probably just knocked it out of the park the first time. Wouldn't shock me at all. But here are some updates of things that are happening. So you've all, you may have already seen the multipurpose field. If you haven't, I hope you'll go up and take a look. So the field was cleared for use on 30 July. The promised date was one August, so we met that deadline. This project is almost complete, pending safety netting at each end, and a fence with double gate and pedestrian walk-through across the front end of the JROTC building. There are some minor punch list items that are remaining to finish out the actual multipurpose field project, but I think you can see from that photo what a great change that is for our campus. And if you remember what those old tennis courts looked like, and you couldn't play tennis on them for the last three years, this is something that all of our programs, all of our students, all of our staff can use. It just has to be coordinated. That's all they have to do, is coordinate with the high school. So we're really excited about that. You can see from this photo that the soccer team is already making great use of the multipurpose field. So great update, and many thanks to the board for their support of the program. And as Dr. Grit has mentioned previously, the vision to see that that was something we needed, and a great decision on your part. This will serve our students and coaches and all the staff for years to come. So great decision. So the MHS tennis courts construction project, lots of things happening there. And you'll see some photos from the new tennis courts. So the concrete floor of the tennis facility building has now been poured with all required infrastructure for the building in place. The masonry work will soon begin with block followed by brick. They're actually laying block today. If you look in, on the left-hand side there at the front of the space, that is block being laid on the building. So they are making great progress. They just got the floor of the building poured last week. I think it was on Wednesday that they poured the floor. Or no, it was Thursday morning, sorry. But they're making great progress down there. There's a better photo of the building and the block that's being laid, so lots of movement there. The court area has been compacted and graded, and the initial layer of stone is in place. The drainage system is now being completed after some elevation corrections. Curbing for the road is in place, also for the parking areas. You probably saw that in the previous photo. Conduit for future lighting capacity is now being installed for the length of the courts. So that will be in place if at some point we decide to add lights to the tennis courts, the conduit will be there for that to happen. So. And then bank areas have all been sown, roadway is almost filled with new grass. So, and actually, a good photo there of the bank behind the West Middle softball field, up above the dugout in the home plate area, you can see that the grass is actually coming in there on the bank. So things are moving in the right direction. MHS JROTC, I know that's been an issue. Multiple parts have been replaced, including a new compressor this past week. And then, on Thursday, it was working the way it should work. And I have not gotten a different update today, but on Thursday, it was working as it should. And I will continue to follow that to make sure that we have that as it should be. McDowell High School landscaping. I know there've been some issues with some of the grounds at the high school. So this is a new look at the front. Some trees were taken out and shrubs cleaned up, and then one tree in particular that was right there at the corner at the main entry was starting to threaten the roof. And so that tree was taken out. I'm not sure you can really tell, but it was right beside the tree that's right in the center of the photo. But that tree that was right there in the corner is now gone. You can see where the straw is there on the bank, that there was a lot of work done right there to clean that up. So there was some good work there for the MHS campus. And some of that was maintenance-related, but also some of it was safety for visibility purposes, making that a little more safe for our students and staff. MHS commons area's lighting, I don't have a photo of this, but we've had some new lighting installed in the back part of the commons area, between the cafeteria and the gym, and it's made a huge difference. I'm sorry I did not get a photo of that. I ran out of time. Summer flooring projects. If you've been visiting schools, you've seen new flooring everywhere, and this room is another example of flooring replacement, which was badly needed. And this room is another example of flooring replacement, which was badly needed. I think this carpet was over twenty years old and it was starting to show that. Uh, we're very excited about that. You're gonna see lots of photos. I'm gonna read the list of all the different places. That is actually the East Middle Media Center. And what a difference. Isn't that great? It's awesome, isn't it? So summer floor, flooring, and this is, uh, this is a fairly comprehensive list, but we may have missed one or two. Eastfield Global Magnet, the media center was completed this summer. East Middle Media Center and office areas were completed. Um, Glenwood Entry Area Stairway, that's the West Marion Media Center right there in that photo. Uh, but at Glenwood, Entry Area Stairway and the auditorium and office areas were completed. Marion Elementary Media Center and Workroom Areas were completed. That's Glenwood. In front of the auditorium right there when you first come in, the main entry and foyer area. Great improvements there. Nebo Media Center and Workroom Areas were completed. I know Ms. Croyman's is happy about that. Um, North Cove Media Center, Office Area, and several classrooms have been completed. West Marion, we saw the media center there and several additional classrooms. We had a lot of new flooring at West Marion last summer. And, uh, we continue to get some, uh, some much-needed, uh, new flooring there. So happy about that at West Marion. And then District Office, the boardroom. There should be a photo of some landscaping at West Marion. There we go. So that's what was left to be done earlier in the day. And you have the, okay, that's a better photo of trees that have been removed. Uh, we should have that finished tomorrow and I, I apologize that that's taken so long. Um, but with all the rain and all the different weather we've had, um, there's, there's only so much time available to do those outside landscaping projects, but we are making great progress on those. Um, Contracted Fitzing Projects, Eastfield, uh, the front gate area has been repaired, replaced. The ass, the athletics field area at Eastfield is being repaired, uh, to make the area more secure. And there will also be a new security gate at the lower entry of Eastfield to, uh, help make that campus more secure. And we'll be, we'll be getting to that one later on. We've already completed the other part of Eastfield, but that, that's, that extra gate has not been completed yet. At Glenwood, repair of the damaged fence along the roadway is complete. At Pleasant Gardens, uh, that's the new fence at Pleasant Gardens behind the office area. Uh, and that was more of a safety issue. We had some students, uh, who had the propensity to maybe go out that door, uh, at a high rate of speed, faster than adults could keep up. So, um, that fencing was, uh, was requested, uh, by both, uh, the Pleasant Gardens Principal and the EC Director. So, um, that is in place and it looks great. Really proud that we were able to get that one done. Uh, Water Bottle Refill Stations, every school now has multiple refill stations. Stations are still being added to some additional requested areas. Those are in place now at every school and that's, uh, been a great improvement for our students and our staff. And if you haven't seen one yet, go visit one of the schools and take a look at the refill station. You just take your water bottle or if you have a tumbler, put it under the refill station and it'll fill it up and you keep moving. Uh, it's a really great addition for our students and our staff. The Summer Paint Crew, all scheduled painting has been completed except for West Middle and McDowell High School. The crew will be at these two sites until school begins. This includes the widening of spaces for the bus parking area and numbers for the student parking lot at McDowell High School. And I know that those are both important issues. And just to clarify, the, the spaces that are there for the buses, they are up to code, but they don't serve the purpose we need them to for our, um, for our afternoon bus departure process. That's why they were widened years ago, was for that departure process. The spaces that we have do meet the code, but they don't meet the process that, that we need, that we use. So they will be widened to make that safer and, uh, more sound. And then contracted tree removal. We have trees at Old Ford and Glenwood that are pending removal by contractor. And so hopefully, we'll be getting to those really soon. That's all I have on this list. There are lots of other things happening, but that's, that's what I have on this list.
Sir, I'd like to, uh, thank you and Mr. Trinks, uh, for the, for getting that stuff done. Especially at Glenwood. I have called a lot of black church. But I, I wanna say this, it does look better. And just for information, he let me know the tree, there's one tree that's gotta come down there and several of them.
There's actually two now at Glenwood, sir.
But.
And two at Old Ford.
The, both, you're familiar with is the pad that they're gonna build picnic shelter on or whatever. Uh, it's my understanding that's gonna start real soon. I went over and did some work. And Mr. Oliver, you don't know how much I appreciate you saying this to me. But when I told you I was going over at Weedy, and I did go over there at Weedy. Uh, but I, I appreciate you telling me that's not my job because that's a very tough, that's a lot of Weedy.
It is.
And, uh, I, I, I do appreciate.
It's not a small campus.
No, and I do appreciate the fact, and she's not here, that Ms. Ray hired somebody to do some Weedy. I appreciate that.
She's doing a great job. And it is, it, it, it's a tough task.
It is.
And the custodians work hard and try to keep up, but it's a tough task. Yes, sir. Glad to help. Uh, any other questions or?
Uh, what's the next big things coming up maintenance-wise?
Well, the next big thing maintenance-wise is to ensure that we have everything that has to be completed for students to return. And so I know one issue, we've got, we're still having some AC issues at the high school. Not just with JROTC, but with, you know, with the campus. So, uh, that's something that will have a lot of attention for sure.
Yeah, well, I, I got to thinking about it today. We don't realize that our, our folks do such a good job and take such pride in their facilities. We don't consider that McDowell High School is over fifty years old now. That, that's hard.
Yes, sir. Well, parts of that building were completed in nineteen sixty-nine.
Yeah, I remember.
So it's been there a while.
It, it has, but, uh, you know, uh, it's like Chuck was saying about the trash on the roadside. You never get finished picking it up. There, there's always going to be something else. That doesn't mean we have to throw up our hands and say we're defeated, but. Keep rolling.
It still looks very modern.
It does.
It looks great. I mean, it's been, it's, it's been very well kept. It's, but it is, it is showing some age, but overall, it's been very well kept.
Tell Garvin the board that we appreciate it.
Just one question I had and, and just for my own information. As far as replacing these carpeted floors with the, uh, flooring that we put in, were we able to use any of our federal COVID funds for that? Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, we were.
Right.
It's ve- very much a health issue.
Well, good. I'm, I'm glad we were able to do that.
Yes, sir.
And who's mopping these floors and how often are they getting mopped?
Well, the LVT floors don't require mopping, uh, nearly like other floors. They, uh, they require much less maintenance than the older tile floors that, that you're used to. So most of the maintenance can be done, um, with a dry mop, but there will, there will be moments when that will be.
But they do still need to be mopped.
They do, but it's not as often.
Okay.
And ma'am, do you, do you disagree with it's not as often as the older tile floors?
No, but I think we need to make sure we're mopping the floors.
I agree.
I mean, I think that's what you were asking, even though these are nice in there, they don't require the same upkeep.
Right.
But we still need to make sure that the floors are being mopped.
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, you know, the, the, the right answer for that is whenever the principal says it needs to be mopped, that's when it needs to be mopped, in the school building. Um, and I know when I was a principal, I, I made several trips around the building each day and I had my radio with me and anything that needed to be addressed, I called my custodians on the radio and said, I need you to come look at this. So, you know, it's gonna be different depending on what space the floor is in, uh, as to how often it needs to be cleaned in a certain way.
Uh, one more final quick question, the estimated completion date on the tennis court?
So the target date, sir, is still one December. Um, there's been some talk that it might be sooner than that. Um, but the target date is still one December. So hopefully, hopefully it'll be ready to use before that, but not later than that. No, sir, I have not, but I will check on that. I, I, I have not heard from her on that.
Was, was there a contingency on the tennis court construction?
Uh, yes, sir. The, the contingency is, I think the standard contingency is ten percent, correct? Ms. Rampy?
Do we have any idea of what we've saved as far as excavating and stuff? Do we have enough to do something with softball gear or?
Sir, I don't know that we're gonna have enough money left in the contingency. Or, yeah, when it's all said and done, that there would be enough to make us, you know, a substantial improvement. But there should be, we should have the ability, um, to make some improvement. But I, I really can't, I don't, I don't want to promise something that we can't do. Because contingency can, it can be eaten up quickly by something we, we don't even know about yet.
If you did it, though, you'd do it, and I'm asking a question, with the same contractor and under the same project?
Yes, sir. With, with that, with that contractor being on site, if there was something that they could do while they're still there, such as, one of the things that will be an improvement for the softball complex will be the, the new pavement for the roadway, because that will come around up to the softball field entry. So that, that will be an improvement. And then there's also gonna be a tie-in to the septic sys, the sewer system, not septic system, that will tie into the public sewer that comes down the roadway. There will be a tie-in that goes from the softball complex down to the new lift station. And the lift station is down behind the West Middle Softball Field. And that's where it will tie in from there up to the roadway.
I was just thinking because there's gonna be a lot of foul balls in always that direction anyway, and we don't have tied-up nets. I can see that building, if you go get peppered, it's one of the cars that are down there for mags or pedestrians, so.
Yes, sir. Well. When you're playing baseball and softball and golf, a lot of stuff, a lot of balls hits, hit, they hit lots of things. So that's very true.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Oliver?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move along and I see, uh, Ms. Hamby's making her way to the podium. And she is, uh, here to present on the federal programs plan and budget. And she is asking us to take some action on this this evening. So, Ms. Hamby, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening Chairman English, members of the board. Dr. Grit, it is my pleasure to present the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four federal programs allotment and plans for McDowell, McDowell County Schools. In your packet, you will find the proposed budget for this year. And Title One, our supplemental funding for low-income schools will receive a little over one point seven million dollars. Most of this funding is allocated to schools for staff and needs above and beyond the current staff allotment. Supplemental supplies and materials, professional development, Title One pre-K, and parent and family engagement. Upon your approval, schools will receive a little over one point six million of this year's budget. At the bottom of the budget page, you will find a list of our Title One District Instructional Initiatives. After meeting with stakeholders, reviewing our data, uh, the team determined funds needed to be allocated for the initiatives listed on the proposed budget. Our next funds that we will look at is our Title Two funds. These funds are used for teacher and instructional support. This year, we, we received two hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars with a focus on developing teacher efficacy and leadership through the development of lead teachers on each campus who will continue to serve as mentors to our beginning teachers, trainers, uh, in the, uh, beginning teachers. Trainers in addition, uh, in the identified areas will focus on, uh, district data, instructional coaching with their peers, all in addition to their regular classroom responsibilities. And that's a lot of work, so we are thankful and we are proud of our teacher leaders that we have. Our lead teachers will also support others using the unpacking document, School Net, and the best instructional practices to provide high-quality grade-level instruction. And they will do this mostly face-to-face or virtually if needed. We also have our Title One, uh, Title Three funds coming, uh, our way this year and these are used to supplement and support our English learners. We support our English, uh, as a second language students by providing ESL assistance, supplies, and professional development. As you'll see on our budget document, this is a small amount of money. It's forty-one thousand, eight hundred, thirty-four dollars. We allocated funds from our Title One funds for our McKinney Vento and homeless students. Uh, this year, we are setting us, set aside, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. These funds support our caseworkers, various needs of our most at-risk students. Lastly, we have our Title Four grant and our RLIS funds, which are used to support students and academic enrichment and various needs through professional development as well of our teachers. These funds come to a total of two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. These are all of the amounts that we have had allocated for this coming year. Are there any questions about any of these funds or how they're being used?
Ms. Hamby, I will point out to the board that that is in, on the third page of your packet if you're looking for it.
Any questions? If there aren't any questions, I'm requesting board approval for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four federal programs and budgets.
I'll make the motion to, uh, to approve those recommendations by you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mr. Frank and a second by Mr. Shuford to approve the federal programs plan and budget this evening. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, then all those in favor of approving the motion, write in and the motion carries you now.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Hamby for keeping up with.
Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you.
If, if I can brag on Ms. Hamby just for, just for a minute, she was, uh, the first in the state, uh, to get that submitted and the way we know, she found an error. Um, so the state didn't know about that, so she found it. Um, so we, we've since then got that, uh, corrected, thanks to Ms. Hamby and, and she's, uh, saved the state for us. So we appreciate her work and, uh, there's a lot, folks, there's a lot that goes into this, a lot, a lot that goes into it.
She's been through the school of Ms. Rampy. All right. We'll keep moving then. Uh, next would be board reports and we've really kinda had a slack month, really, uh, after all the excitement of, uh, trying to name a superintendent and, uh, set some goals for the coming year. But are there board members that have, uh, items that need to be reported to the board? Mr. Frank?
I, I do and, and I should, uh, yield my time to, uh, Dr. Grit because he was so gracious as to go down to our boot camp, uh, NJROTC. Boot camp? And, uh, I understand with a few exceptions of bee stings and stuff like that, it was, uh, very successful and, and everything went without a hitch, which normally it does. And, uh, sir, I, I, I was on a much-needed, uh, respite time, but I do appreciate you going down and I hope that you got to do the zip line maybe and some of the other activities propelling and things that the kids do. And I, I'm sure it was impressive to say the least. I've been down there several, several times.
Absolutely. We enjoyed it. Mr. Oliver and I went down and Miss Bennett from the high school, uh, had a great day there. Uh, we, we didn't get to do some of the fun stuff, but we did do a lot of walking. They walked us all over the place. Um, I didn't know that we were gonna do that much walking. I didn't have the right shoes on. Um, but we, we did a, a good bit of, of just watching, watching what the kids were up to. They had an outstanding time and, and, uh, really, really is a stellar program.
Yeah, next year, take a fit bit with.
That'd be a good idea. You're spot on. That's a great activity.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Silver?
So, um, I, uh, there's never adult time when you're talking about early, early childhood things. With our, uh, pre-K, it's, it's in, in full gear and our, um, Head Start programs. And so, uh, on September thirteenth, we had a, a pre-K meeting. And then on August the seventh, we had the Head Start policy meeting. And just lots of exciting things are continuing to happen for our youngest learners here in the county. And, uh, as anybody knows, uh, the earlier we can get interventions in, the more successful kids are gonna be. And I'm just so thankful for both of these programs, I'm thankful for, um, the leadership of, of these two groups. Um, continue to, to have staffing issues and, um, the bulk of the staffing issues result from the, uh, salaries. And, and we are just, we're struggling to compete with private agencies, um, that can, can pay more. But we know as a school system, we, we work with what we have. And then we hope that our, uh, community partners, uh, at the county level and at the state level will begin to also recognize that higher salaries in education will get people in these positions. So, uh, continue to just encourage our community to reach out to the people that are there to represent these youngest learners. Um, one thing that I do want to take the opportunity to share, uh, you know, because they're new teachers in Head Start, and this really doesn't have anything to do with this report, but I do wanna brag on Alyssa Knite. So I did try to bridge that and say, beginning teachers and Head Start. Um, so excited for this opportunity that Alyssa has, this has been a brainchild of Alyssa Knite's for a long time. And seeing it come to fruition at Pleasant Gardens Elementary School, um, is the, uh, the creation of what I'm gonna call the first new teacher store. I don't know if it's in the state of North Carolina, but since I can't prove it wrong, we're gonna say the first new teacher store in the state of North Carolina. And, um, the beauty of this, and I, I heard Mary say yes, because sometimes when, when, when you, you, a couple of things happen when you move into a classroom. First of all, you don't have anything, but gosh almighty, when you get there, you inherit things from people that retired a long time ago. And, and you, you don't have a lot of room for all of that stuff, and you don't wanna throw it away, but at some point, you become overwhelmed. Or your family becomes overwhelmed, one way or the other, some of this stuff's gotta go somewhere, and it's a lot of really good stuff. And so, um, Alyssa Knite, uh, recruited, uh, former McDow County Schools guidance counselor Betty Ross. And if you know Betty Ross, if she says I'm on it, she is gonna be on it. They have been transforming a classroom in the basement area of Pleasant Gardens, along with the lead teachers in McDow County, um, with the help of Carolina Forest Products, formerly Columbia Carolina, that purchased ten bookcases for the school system to be able to display the, this material. Heather Foster is one of the lead teachers, she herself purchased racks for stuff to be displayed on. So I say all of that to say, in, in about another week, Mary, I know you, you've been over there helping, um, that stuff is gonna be out and ready, and our beginning teachers first are gonna be able to go over there. And that stuff is gonna be there free for them just to come through and get and continue to educate kids with. Um, and, uh, then once they have the opportunity to go through it, when you think about, uh, classroom teachers that, that perhaps maybe were teaching fifth grade and have been moved to kindergarten, or vice versa, and you don't have the material, and you don't really have the money to go and purchase it yourself, well, it's right there, just go get it. And so, we're, we're hopeful, and it, and if you guys, um, will continue to encourage Alyssa, I wanna get WLOS down here. And I want them to do a story on this, because I think this is another way of just how a community comes together to help its people. And, and so again, at Head Start, they're doing a lot of stuff with beginning teachers too, and so that's part of my report, you know? Cause we also want those people to, to be able to come there and, and get materials. It's so exciting, um, to go by there and, and see what they're doing. It's not quite ready yet, but it will be.
Anyone else on this side? Anyone on this side?
Mr. Oliver did a great job of building the ground, so I don't have a lot, I have, uh, uh, one request of the board. I sent you guys an email with four options for the sign, uh, with the three donors are, are ready to get this moving and, and, and get it done. Uh, so the four options, Karen, do you have those?
Uh, yes.
Oh, yeah. So obviously, these, these are three of the four, uh, the first one is digital, uh, everywhere that we contacted. Uh, this has a five-year warranty on the digital part of it, so that's bulbs, maintenance, stuff like that. After five years, we would have to have someone, uh, not like Mr. Garrett or something that knows a lot about technology figure this out for us. But, uh, so that one is the digital option right there, the LED digital for a high school. That one is a tradi- traditional, uh, obviously you have to have someone, whether it's, um, from a, a certain class or what, changing these daily, uh, like we have in the past. The third option is just to do, uh, one where it just has a school name on there, but it's a light box, so it does light up, uh, minimal energy. So energy-stabilized, uh, but I think that will look pretty good. And then obviously, the fourth one is a more traditional style, you have the fourth one here, one of them.
It's the very bottom.
It's the very bottom of the email.
That's a separate text.
Well, it was, it was the arts way one.
Oh, yeah.
There it is.
Well, Ms. Pippo said that looks like a funeral home, so maybe we don't wanna choose this one. Uh, I thought it looked classy, but, uh.
I think it looks like a funeral.
Now that I'm looking at it, I can see the point. So really, we just need to pick one of those.
Well, it's like the county commissioners, like something that would be outside of the, in that day and here it is, or something from a, from a funeral.
If they would help pay for it, we'd pick that. But that's our four options, so just getting kind of a, a board vote on what, what you guys would like to see, um, just, just to move forward, yes, ma'am.
Just, I got a quick question.
Sure.
Is this replacing the wooden one that's, if, if you're going up, is this replacing the one to the right that's kinda like in the hill? Or is this the one where we put stuff on it?
It's actually on the other end, it's down on Seventy-V West, because we don't have a sign really down there, a high school sign yet, it looks just like West McDow.
Okay.
Um, and that's where we're directing most of the traffic to now, it's on Seventy, coming in by the guardhouse.
Okay.
So to have a nice sign for the high school, letting them know that, hey, it's not just the middle school up there, it's our high school and middle school.
And my other question is, and I don't think there is, but do we have any restrictions on lighting or anything like that? Like LED lighting or anything like that on that road?
I don't think so at that point, cause there's no houses close to that, that corner right there. Um, the one that we have right now for West, I think has lighting down there. So the power and stuff would already be down there.
My understanding there is power there, Mr. Oliver, we talked about that today, that there's power there at the sign base for West.
Oh, look at that.
Of course he would pull that up.
So, you know, West McDow there, we like to get a high school down there too.
Yeah.
Mr. Settles, what, uh, which one do you block?
I'm, I'm easy.
I mean, which, well, I, I know that one. Just out of, just out of curiosity.
Cost-wise, I mean, cost-wise, you're looking, your digital one obviously is gonna cost more than all.
I don't like that.
But these donors, they're, they're alumni, like I told you, from the same graduating class. And, uh, like I told you, as long as it's not bigger than the school itself, I don't think budget's gonna be a problem. Uh, so if the money's out there, I would say go with a digital, especially if we can maybe play a little athletic highlight there or, uh, you know, the, the pictures of, of kids with ROTC or something, any kind of event that we wanna specially recognize, it's a big good place to do that. And it'd be nice if the students drive by and see your picture on there for some accomplishment, so I would pick that one.
Are you gonna do a straw vote right now?
This may be a stupid question.
I mean, do you just do one, two, three, or four, with digital bin one, the yellow bin two, uh, the light box three, and then the funeral home four? If you just hold up your number, we'll just go with the majority.
This is probably a stupid question.
Yeah.
But it will not be my first one. Do they come with a pole?
Yeah.
I mean.
Everything's there.
Stop that, man, why are they there? Uh, yeah, and it'll be taller than the West.
You can make it as tall as you want, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, well, that was kinda my question.
Is it gonna be wrapped aside with? Kinda.
How do we do it so that it doesn't specifically overshadow West either?
Bigger.
Right, and that?
Here's what I would think that we probably might wanna think about doing, is doing a big park sign with West and McDow High, and taking the other one and moving it somewhere else. Um, but that way we represent both schools going up the hill, because if we put that one into place and it's a bigger sign that says West McDow, McDow High School, we can do that and share, and share accomplishments for the middle school. The only thing there is you run into a problem with East, not, uh, not getting something.
Well, take the other sign, the old sign, West sign.
Change it to you.
Change, but it over it is. Of course that's.
It doesn't cost much, oh, you can do that.
They sell paint at Lowe's, oh, gosh.
Oh, no.
I think they, down at McDow, take the last one that we, we put it down next to, uh, two twenty-six has worked very well. Uh, the one at, uh, Universal has been a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah, from the first year or two it was in place, and I'm sure they've improved a lot on them now, but it might be good to get some feedback as to what, uh, who, where that came from.
So the bright one at McDow, take on two twenty-six is the same company?
Yeah, it's worked, it's worked very well. Oh, okay, good deal, good deal, yeah, thank you.
What, what's wrong with the one that's on, on forty?
You can't read it as you go back.
You can't read it for one thing, but it's down half the time, uh, and the, and the, uh, now it's, it's up to, uh, having to make on it. And it's just, it's a constant maintenance problem.
Electronic components over time.
Yeah, and they're gonna break down.
You have to replace all of it.
We, we have a little issue there, we're not allowed to cut trees on forty, that's one of those things. So, so when you're moving by there, maybe miles an hour, you can't, or, or to get slid or something.
Ms. Ward, how's your sign work?
Amazing.
Okay.
We're four years, we just crack for it.
But you've.
User-friendly. Great. Even the neighbors can find it up the lot sometimes.
I'm sorry.
There are houses close to that one.
Well, I, personally, I, I think it would be nice to have the LED sign, so you could advertise events, you know, uh, Western four A basketball playoffs here tonight, or whatever. Uh, the, the only thing would be, uh, is that, and forgive me for not knowing, but is that still in the city limits of Mary, is any kinda sign ordinance or something we might need to check on first?
I could call.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I know part of Seven deep there is in the city limits, but I'm not sure where, where they stop and, and we start.
I thought the city limits are on past the baseball field.
Well, I, I, like I say, I really don't know it, but let's check into it. But let's, uh, let's kinda each give her two cents worth on the sign. I like the LED sign, just because we could highlight events that are going on.
So digital LED, where's your hand? That's majority, okay. That's really what they wanted to know, so we can prepare.
Donnie, did you say we would combine, uh, like high school and middle school?
I think we probably should.
So if, so if the proportion, then you're just about to have, have the first one, right? So you'd have more room to put both schools at the top.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure those come in different sizes.
Yeah, and it's, it doesn't have to be two-tiered, you can do three. So you could do McDow High School, West McDow underneath it, and then do the digital part out of there. So it almost looks like you're going high school, middle school, middle.
You should check with DOT as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say DOT and then.
DOT and the city.
And city limits, and I was also gonna say, I think maybe come up with a couple of design options, like what it would look like, and I'm only saying that because we've had this issue in the past, respectfully, where, oh, West is the favorite school, oh, East, yeah, I just don't wanna get into this, well, we did this for West, but we didn't do this for East, kind of stuff. And, I mean, I like the idea, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, we have run into that issue multiple times where this.
Two out of the three donors went to West, but there's one strong voice donor that went to East.
Right.
So we could, uh.
I'm not trying to exclude West, I don't want you to think that, I'm just saying.
Yes.
Do you see where I'm going with this? We've had this problem. It's a mistake.
So what we'll do. What we'll do is I'll email you the designs, I'll call the company, email you the designs that they come up with, whether it's school. In the meantime, I'll call G. Bowden Lawrence and see if he can do some digging about what we need to follow up with.
If, if you'll, if you'll email those, email those directly to me, what I'll do is take them and put them in our weekly review, so the board can see them. And Mr. Oliver and I can do a little research with the DOT as well as the city, and that way we can put it all together in one spot for them. All right.
All right.
Did you say donors want to donate some, for East to get something as well?
They would.
Because, I mean, that would be great.
That'd be great, that'd be great, I just don't wanna even do that, that's just my opinion.
Yep, I think they would be fine with that, with that.
Well, Donnie, please thank them on behalf of the school board and the school system, like, we're, we're grateful for, for their willingness to, to gift us with this, so, thank you.
Like you said, we're all a big community, so, so, uh, we'll be happy, it's, it's prideful. Anything prideful, like Ms. Silver had mentioned, doing some paint going up to the high school with, like, lightning bolts or whatever else. Anything that we can do to show some pride, I think is appreciated, so.
Thank you, Donnie.
Anyone else on this side?
We did have a board policy meeting in, uh, July, and you see the results of that, uh, in the board packet. So you've got all of those, uh, for the public's sake, minor changes, uh, grammatical changes primarily is what they are, which is always interesting that the school board assists, associate, like, they literally will change a dot or from an and to an or, because they realize that, and so, um, really, really simple changes. All of that you can find on our website if you care to look through them, um, but they were in the board packet, so you were able to see what, what those recommendations were.
Anyone else?
Yep, just real briefly, um, not any real big report or anything like that, I sure did appreciate not having a work session this, um, and I had a nice little getaway, and it was really enjoyable. But tonight really made me think and reflect about how hard our team has been working while we have had some downtime. And I just truly, truly want to thank our executive team, our principals, our administration here. I know it has been a busy month, you guys have really, um, worked your butts off, and, and we appreciate you, and we thank you for all your hard work and your time, you, you mean the world to us, thank you so much.
Okay, then. Well, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the consent agenda. And as you know, uh, any item on the consent agenda may be considered separately from the rest of the agenda. So is there any item that board member feels that we should, uh, remove from the, uh, consent agenda to consider separately? Isn't that the same as? Is that one there? Right, okay, all right. Okay. Nothing that, uh, needs to be considered separately? Okay, and for the public's knowledge, the consent agenda contains facility use requests, uh, board policy revisions, budget amendments, and minutes from the regular board meeting of last month there in July. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Ms. Muma? And Mr. Settles makes the second? Is there any discussion? If not, then, all in favor, right hand, and the motion carries. Okay. Now, the chair would entertain a motion for the board to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight, dot one-one, for the following purposes. Under subsection A one, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential student information, and under section, subsection A one, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information. And if there is a motion to move into closed session for those reasons, the, the floor is open.
Summon.
Ms. Silver makes the motion, is there a second? Mr. Shuford makes the second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, and the board will now go into closed session.